Good evening, I would like to call the Melville School District December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two School Board Meeting to order. If we could please all rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us. We have a full house, standing room only. It's been awhile since I've seen that. If I could do a roll call, please. Jeff Wolman.
Yes.
Scott Huggerich.
Yes.
Tori Belkey.
Yes.
Jean Preto.
Yes.
Grace Wright.
Yes.
Patrick McKelvey.
Yes.
And I'm Peggy Hassler. I would also like to introduce our student rep that's here. Her name is Jenna Jobber. Is that right? Did I say it right? Alright. And our other student rep is Eric Klasser, but he is not here as of right now. So thank you guys for volunteering to be part of the board. If I could please get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Communications, we have recognition of staff, students, and community volunteers. I believe first we'll hear from Troutwine, Dr. Shannon Henderson, or Michelle Woods. Both of you? Okay.
Good evening. I am proud to share members of our Buddy Club with you this evening. They are, the students are gonna take over. I want to first introduce Ms. Warren. Come on up, guys, don't be bashful. I want to first introduce Ms. Warren, our school counselor, and Ms. Briscoe, one of our special education teachers. And I'm gonna turn it over to the kids now.
My name is Dragan and I'm the founding member of the Buddy Club. Everyone let me tell you how the Buddy Club started. Last year in third grade, I was playing with my friends, Zaden and others. I noticed that no one else played with them and an idea came to mind. I should start a club. I told Ms. Warren about my idea, she accepted it and helped me present it to Dr. Henderson who approved.
Hello, my name is Patty Paraka. Last year in third grade, Ms. Warren and Dragan recruited me and four other students to play and eat lunch with our students in the center-based classroom. I said yes and we started playing with all students in rotation.
Hello, my name is Cory Barnes. Last year in fourth grade, Amina and I noticed that Chloe and other students were playing by themselves. We talked to the center-based teacher and decided from that day on we would play with them. We hung out with them whenever we could. We have all become best friends.
Hello, my name is Amina Messick. The Buddy Club has developed into official club this year. We are inviting all first through fifth grade students to join. The club has grown from five students to currently having about thirty students this year. A buddy is someone who pays attention to the most vulnerable students, students that may be in the blue zone or red zones, and you, student.
Hello, my name is Madine Ramich. We would like for Buddy Club to be a school-wide philosophy, not just a club, but a way of life at Troutwine. We would like for Buddy Clu... We would like for... Not just a club, but a way of life at Troutwine. We would like to see Buddy Club in all their schools throughout the Melville School District. Thank you to Ms. Warren and all the Buddy Club. Thank you for your time.
I just have to say that that is probably the coolest thing I've ever seen. Makes me wanna cry. So thank you, and I agree with you one hundred percent. We need to have one of these in every one of our schools. So good job, guys. this meeting is recorded on YouTube. If you'd like to see your children speak, it's already recorded and up there. Just follow the link through the Melville School District website. Uh huh. Okay. Okay, next up, we have Woolen, Dr. Sorry, I just wanted it to be quiet so we can also honor your children.
That's, that's okay. I can be loud if I need to be, right? Well, good evening, my name is Michelle Wood and I have the privilege of being the Assistant Principal at Woolen and at Troutwine. A night of celebration tonight. Our Student of the Month celebration is a big deal at Woolen and we are so proud of all of these students for all of their accomplishments. Really, what we really practice is following the Wildcat Way, which means being respectful, responsible, and safe, and that encompasses so many different things. So normally each month, we have families join our celebration team at Woolen and we go into our Students of the Month class and we surprise them and we invite their families to join us. So tonight, this evening, we wanted to recognize our December Students of the Month here and to be able to celebrate with all of you guys. So our kindergarten Student of the Month for December is Kalila Simmons and her teacher, Ms. Geisler, says Kalila has consistently shown integrity and honesty throughout the school day and she can be counted on to do the right thing and always has a positive attitude. One of the things she admires most about Kalila is that she shows empathy and support for her classmates each day. And so Dr. Meshke has some yard signs that when we celebrate with our Students of the Month, they get those signs and get to put them in their yards and celebrate. So, like I said, it's a big deal at Woolen. We're so excited about it.
Everybody, neighborhood, uh...
Yeah. So our first grade Student of the Month for December is Olivia Nguyen. And Ms. Davis says Olivia is consistently responsible and respectful. She is such a positive presence to have in the classroom and always eager to try her hand at learning new things. Our second grade Student of the Month is Adeline Blunt. Ms. Carl says Adeline is an amazing second grader who demonstrates kindness to everyone and goes out of her way to include others. Adeline is very in tune to her peers and shows empathy always to those who need it. She has really worked so hard daily, showing tremendous growth in everything this school year. You can kinda step forward so we can see who you are, too. Our third grade Student of the Month is Ruby Johnson. Ms. Brogan says Ruby consistently shows kindness and support for her classmates. She is hardworking and always puts forth her best effort. Her thoughtfulness and positive attitude is an asset to her classroom. Our fourth grade Student of the Month is Jace Blackman. Ms. Timmerman says Jace has been a wonderful, helpful, and fun student to have in fourth grade. He is a hard worker and he is a leader in their classroom in regards to his work and behavior. And last but not least, our fifth grade Student of the Month is Cooper Schlake. Ms. Brady says that Cooper has been a great example of a role model and leader to his peers and other students at Woolen from day one. When asking his teachers to describe him, Cooper is thought as driven, reliable, confident, a great friend, and a team player. So we are so very proud of all of these amazing students for all that they do at Woolen each and every day, and it was a pleasure recognizing them and celebrating with all of you this evening. Thank you.
Congratulations, you guys. Thank you for being such awesome role models. Okay, moving on to open period for patron comments. We do have one person, Rebecca Bahora, signed up to speak.
I would love to be able to give...
Oh, we have to do the MNEA. So sorry.
No problem. It said it behind you, so I knew I was there.
Says it in front of me, too, and I just, I blew that one. I apologize.
It's no big deal. Well, hello, everyone. My name is Deana McKelvey and I'm president of Melville NEA, and this is my favorite part of being able to introduce you to some of these great kids across the district. So I'm gonna start with Ella Roth because we did give her award last week, but she didn't know that we did that. So she's here tonight, so if she could approach the podium. Ella Roth is a student at Oakville High School and her teacher couldn't be here tonight, but she wanted me to let you know that Ella Roth is a freshman and Ella is a hard worker in Spanish class. She is diligent and focused and she always has her work done, completes extra credit, and she is helpful to her classmates. Ella catches on really quickly in Spanish. She is funny and witty, too, and I have loved having her in class. Our next student is from Troutwine, and that is Sage Brummet. If the student and the teacher could please approach the podium.
Hi, I'm Sue Mazak. I actually got to work with Sage when she first came to Troutwine as a second grader, but her teacher now is Ms. Emily Thiel, and Sage Brummet is a lovely young girl. Sage exemplifies what it means to be a tiger of integrity each and every day. She walks into Troutwine with a positive attitude that spreads to every person she interacts with. Sage greets others with a hello and a huge smile on her face. Sage shows leadership by modeling expected behaviors throughout the day, and she works hard to actively participate in her learning. She strives to meet academic goals and continues to push herself as a learner. Sage is a genuine, caring, and compassionate friend to those around her. She helps her peers by finding missing items or explaining the directions in a different way. She never complains and she's always eager to help out when, when, and wherever she can. We're so proud of the young lady she is today and we can't wait to see the kind of great accomplishments she has in store for her in future.
Alright, and now from Woolen, I have the pleasure of asking Noah Sanchez and his teacher to please approach the podium.
We're gonna, it won't be until after he's done.
Hello. So one thing that we always want for our kids is to be kind when no one is looking. So our third grade class voted to have a pizza party. Each child was supposed to bring in money, and at one point Noah was worried about how much money was being brought in, so he went home and asked his mom if he could use his money in his own piggy bank so that every kid could get a slice of pizza. He didn't do it for recognition, he didn't even know anyone would know. He did it because his classmates, he all wanted them to get a piece of pizza. So it makes, it makes me tear up. He was willing to use his own money to make that happen. Noah is such a kind student and we are so proud of how he represents Woolen.
That concludes our presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sorry, I missed you. Congratulations Ella, Sage, and Noah, that's awesome. Okay, now we are moving on to open period for patron comments, and we have Rebecca Bahora signed up. Rebecca, you have three minutes allotted for your speaking, and the time limit will be strictly enforced. The Board is accountable to the state for protecting the legal rights of the schools, employees, students, parents, and others. Discussion of individuals or specific situations will not be allowed. The Board will strictly enforce these rules and speakers will be interrupted if they discuss matters that might violate Board rules and policy. Thank you.
Alright, thank you for having me. I'm a mom to three children at Beerbaum Elementary. I have a fifth grader, a second grader, and a kindergartner, and I'm also the PTO president at Beerbaum. In the September Board meeting, Dr. Gaines asked what kind of school district do we want in the next three to five years? We've seen a lot of great information being presented lately, and we've also heard some conversations about tax rate increases. Tonight, I wanted to share my perspective as a taxpayer, a school volunteer, and as a mom. To say the least, I'm at our school quite a bit and it gives me a pretty unique up-close view into our school. I'm like that house guest that comes like before you're ready for company, so I see the real, I see the mess, and quite honestly, it's not all sunshine and rainbows. The pressure being placed on our schools and our educators is high, and someone argue with the staffing issues and the post-pandemic issues, the pressure is like none other. Even with these unique pressures, though, our schools are making it happen. My kids get picked up and dropped off every day, my kids are learning, and they are growing. So some may argue, don't fix what isn't broken, and some may call it being fiscally responsible, but I feel like that logic is flawed. Our educators and our staff deserve fair and competitive salaries. They're people, they have homes, and they have families. Our children also deserve to have the best teachers out there, teachers that can be retained and given the opportunity and time to excel, grow, and flourish. They shouldn't have to choose between being loyal to our district and a fair salary. As you all know, Beerbaum is a huge school. We have more than 500 students, and that's a lot of different learning styles and a lot of different behaviors that teachers need to accommodate. High-quality teachers that know our school, our families, and our students' situations is a key piece. We've seen so much data on the benefit of math and reading interventionist, but sometimes it's hard to quantify the social and emotional data. With our ESER positions, we have seen the important work that is happening in social and emotional learning. We are seeing that kids that need that little extra help, the ones that may have been left to work it on their own before, exceed. My youngest, who recently started kindergarten, fell into this category. We did all the right things leading up to kindergarten. We, you know, put him in preschool at Beerbaum. He was up at the school all the time with me, we practiced drop-off. He knew the school in and out, top to bottom. Unfortunately, though, kindergarten was a tough transition for him. He was overwhelmed and overstimulated. He cried every single morning for the first two weeks, and every morning our SEL would come down to the office, hold his hand, and walk him to his classroom. He would also sit with him in the classroom until he calmed down. Now Max walks past our SEL with a high five and a smile. It's the cutest thing ever. It seemed so small and insignificant, but it set Max up with the confidence that he needed. This isn't the only student that it's happening to, and it's not the only example. But no matter the issue, when a teacher has to choose between helping one student and eighteen others who are waiting for them, it's a ripple effect. These extra hands help everyone. So in conclusion, and to answer Dr. Gaines' question, no matter what side you support, I think we can all agree that we want what is best for our children. Being able to retain and reward high-quality teachers and staff is good for all children. I would love to see our Board vote on and give taxpayers the option to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to governance, we have first up the audit report, Marshall Crutcher.
Alright, our auditors are Daniel Jones and Associates, and this year to present the annual audit report is Desi Kirchhoff.
Thank you, Marshall, and good evening, everybody. So on behalf of Daniel Jones and Associates, I would like to thank the Board for giving us this opportunity to audit Melville School District for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. First off, I'd like to thank Marshall and Carrie. They have had a fair share of requests from us and have responded quickly both day and night and got us all the items we needed and organized, which is always a huge help. So thank you, Marshall. The district had a minor state finding regarding the use of separate bank accounts for all debt service funds. Section one six five point zero one one RSMO requires the debt service funds to be maintained in a separate bank account. The purpose of the statute is that the district is not using those funds for operations. In this case, the district does maintain a separate bank account for debt service, but there were funds that were in the general account that had not been transferred to the debt service bank account. Although this is very minor, it is something that is required to be reported on. So basically, we as auditors are to look at the district and issue opinions as to whether or not the school district has presented fairly in all material respects, or has any material misstatements in their financial data, internal control, or federal programs. The audit is basically broken into three parts: financial statements, state requirements, and federal awards. We issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, and this is the highest mark a district can receive and means this was a clean audit without issues. Second, through our testing, we found the district to be in compliance with state requirements relating to attendance, transportation, and budgetary procedures. And finally, the district expended more than $750,000 in federal awards, which means they were subject to a single audit. We have issued an unmodified opinion for compliance with federal awards, and again, this is the highest opinion a district can receive. So in closing, I would like to congratulate the school district on having an excellent audit and thank the Board for giving us this opportunity.
I'm open to any questions, too, if needed.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions other than what's already been asked on e-boards? So for the audience, the entire audit report, seventy-two pages, I believe, is on e-boards along with the Board's questions, but if anybody has anything else after the presentation?
I just also wanted to say, Desi is an Oakville alumni and his father is a Melville High School alumni, so.
Honored to be here.
We appreciate it. But yes, so everything we saw, that was the only, you already explained the one little tidbit of, that wasn't a big deal from what I understand. So, great job, Marshall and the rest of the district, and thank you for doing the audit. Anybody else? Alright.
I can't stress enough how much we appreciate the support from Marshall and Carrie. They helped us a ton, and they were very organized, which is not like every district, so thank you.
Okay. So, are we ready? Alright, so if I could please get a motion to approve the audit report as presented?
Still moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Next up is Consider Melville High School Dish Machine Bid, Katie Gag.
Good evening. So I am here to ask for approval for a new dish machine at the very oh-so-busy Melville High School. The current dish machine is older, I guess would be thirty-plus. It's still running, but it has its days when it gives them a little pickups here and there, and just to continue to be an efficient kitchen, you need all your equipment working properly, so I found a plan to replace it. So we're hoping to get this work done over spring break, so that's why I'm bringing it to you now as opposed to this summer. So we sent it out for bids and we received two bids back. I am recommending Belter, who we have worked with multiple times in the past, purchased several pieces of equipment through them. I'm very confident in their capabilities, great communication. Thankfully, it doesn't have a very long lead time, that piece of equipment, so it should be here... be here before spring break and Hobart will hold on to it before they come do the install. So I'm recommending the lowest bidder of Belter. They're qualified and I welcome any questions you might have.
Does anybody have anything?
I just got one silly question. How many dishes does this thing run through on the average hour?
Oh.
Because I know what my dishwasher does, and I should have asked this earlier, but I just had that moment, I wonder how many dishes this thing does in an hour?
A lot. It's a lot. It's a conveyor, so it's constantly going. Well, Dr. Gaines, Dr. DeKemper, we all.
I was gonna ask, in the meantime.
We know that machine well.
Does somebody have to hand wash all of them before it's?
No, no. We just rent them off. Oh, okay. Well, there was some scrubbing. There is some scrubbing involved. Sometimes on some trays, but a considerable amount. It's mainly a lot of the student trays. That's mainly what we're doing. There is a three-compartment sink where we do a lot of the scrubbing of the steamwell pans and everything like that. But they do, on a, you know, good 700 lunches a day.
That's a lot of dishes.
A lot of trays. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a motion?
Yes. If I can get a motion to approve the dish machine and installation package from Belter, who submitted the lowest qualified bid totaling $65,770.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Katie. All right. Next up is Consider 2324 School Calendar, Dr. Brian Smith.
Good evening, everybody. Over the course of six hours, beginning in late October and going to just before Thanksgiving, the academic calendar committee consisted of about 30 people, certified and classified administrators, parents, support staff members, teachers, central office members. And so we had the opportunity to engage in some conversation around the establishment of the 2324 academic calendar. As part of e-boards, you, the public will find and those that are here can see, displayed we have a calendar that has some, meets all the minimum qualifications that it needs to. It's at least 1,044 hours in length. It has at least 36 hours of inclement weather days built in. It has three and a half days of teacher workdays as part of the MOU, 174 days for students, and 182 days for staff. And so we consulted, this year was the first year we did a thought exchange as well, to try to solicit the input from the community so that we could get an idea of exactly what was important to them. We had 1,253 responses and it looks like a little over 1,300 participants. So, and that ranged, obviously, from our students, to our employees, to our families and parents overall. Also annually, I do a feedback form, asking similar questions about all the big dates that you would typically see on a calendar and what their recommendations and what their personal preferences were. So the calendar that's presented before you has all the color coding marked on it for first days and last days. You can see that the first day is the Tuesday after the first Monday of which we can start because of state law around the tourism industry piece. And the last day on the calendar, as it is marked, would be the Wednesday after Memorial Day. So in a calendar committee situation, as I've learned very quickly, there's no pleasing everyone, and many times, there's very pleasing very few. But there were a lot of compromises and negotiations that went into the process, and this was a calendar that the committee unanimously said that they could live with in terms of implementation. So this one, after any comments or questions that you may have, would simply require board action to be able to approve.
I just wanted to make a comment that I just appreciated, that you mentioned the state law that now requires us to not be able to start because that has a big effect on our calendar.
It does.
And I think some people don't recognize that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. And also, I'd like to add that I did go through the calendar and the survey that you provided the results of the survey, and you certainly hit on every top of the most heavily weighted choices of the survey. While, like you said, you can't make everybody happy, you did a good job, and I don't think there was, there was no way to exchange, well, if they want to do this, what could we look at to change? And there really is no room there to change any of it. So, great job and thank you for all the time and effort that everybody put in.
Sure. It was the first time we had to go to a third meeting, so we spent some extra time on it. My job was simply to facilitate that. Really, the credit goes to the committee for taking the time out of their days and nights to be able to get this done.
Right. Thank you, committee. Anybody else? Okay. If I could please get a motion to approve the 2324 Melville School District calendar as presented.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the Strategic Plan Update, Employee Support, Dr. Shannon Pike.
Okay, so tonight, my presentation covers and centers on employee support, one of the five themes in the strategic plan, focusing more on our employee component of it. And really, that looks deeply into supporting goals and understanding that our workforce is an integral part in supporting our workforce, achieving both individual and organizational goals, using baseline data and the use of ongoing methods of analysis for that data, both identifying any necessary change that we may see that supports our workforce. So we look at key individuals within that strategic theme: senior district leadership, human resources, classified directors, building level leadership, communications department, and the district's workforce to some degree. So some key areas to positively impact our employee support are outlined within the strategic plan. First, we're going to continuously focus on a stream of identifying and researching and examining how we're going to continue to support and attract and recruit and retain all of the individuals that we have within our, there it is, our workforce. Second, we're going to identify targeted personalized PD for our staff. We're going to analyze our onboarding and our mentoring program that we currently have and ensure that that is strengthened from the time our employees walk into our district and throughout their tenure here. Most importantly, those first two years are key. We know that for our certified staff, not just teachers but administrators, that is key to holding on to them and retaining them overall, beyond just their first two years, but beyond that three-to-five-year bubble. But also for our classified staff, engaging with them within those first 60 days to ensure that we are supporting them beyond that. Also reviewing opportunities to analyze employee engagement through feedback and participation with our employees and continuing to address the benefits of inclusivity, equity, and diversity to develop a workforce that reflects and represents our community. So all five of these areas within the employee support are strategies that we're continuously examining all the time. So just as in years past, we're constantly analyzing salary comparisons, and later on tonight, you will hear a salary comparison from Dr. Gaines. He will go into detail on that. So that is following this presentation. This year, we continuously brainstorm ways to reach candidates by hosting onsite job interviews. These are called our open interviews, with even narrowing our focus specifically to departments. We're excited about these interviews. We've had huge success bringing candidates to these open interviews and embracing them here. And so we are now expanding those and actually just having those interviews by departments. Those new open interviews will be held in January and February. We have a department onsite interview for transportation in January, and then for food service and for our custodial staff, and then we're actually kicking off a substitute specifically focused on our substitutes in February. I also meet regularly with our classified leadership team to determine what their needs are in terms of the hiring process as well. Our curriculum team, in collaboration with our building administrators, gained feedback for our staff to understand the ongoing needs of our certified staff and what professional development is needed. Additionally, in HR, we're constantly looking at ways to recruit new teachers and retain quality teachers as well. We invest in our staff and by offering them professional development that's personalized to their needs within their first several years of teaching and every year thereafter, the hope is that our staff feel comfortable and valued to do their very best when they're teaching. PD is offered to teachers at the district level and offered also at the building level to help them grow and develop themselves as individuals professionally through the advancements of degree certifications, participating in leadership development programs, mentoring, et cetera. Human Resources is able to also help those teachers capitalize on their personalized method of professional development and their professional growth. We also have the opportunity to have our staff apply for internal transfers as they see fit as well. And by expanding the definition of professional development to include mental health, support, and self-care, we know that the district can continue to take steps to identify and address the burnout that some of our staff may be feeling. We also support our employees through the Employee Assistance Program that is available to every single employee in our district, whether full-time or part-time, and it provides urgent assistance to employee health needs and helps develop a program of wellness for our employees at no cost to them. This fall, I met with our EAP representative to understand more of the benefits offered to our employees so that we are able to continue to embrace this resource in all of our employees and resources that they have for our districts across the district. Melville classified workforce has a lot of diversity as well in their PD and their roles and responsibility, and these employees need and deserve professional development as well, specifically tailored to their skill sets and growth potential. And over the last several years, we've made efforts to provide professional development that is helpful for our employees on a peer-to-peer setting. So for example, they're communicating with their coworkers, they are working through the advancements to evaluate employees for continuous improvement in cycle as well. Human Resources meets regularly with the classified leadership team to understand their overall needs as well and to try to enter, to basically help them promote and understand how their promotion can also be transferable to other positions within the classified staff. So the onboarding, what does that look like for our certified staff? With respect to onboarding, 72 new teachers were on-boarded this August. In the new teacher training, we had a three-day event that was specifically designed to orientating them to the district, and it was holistic in that it provided information that was helpful to acquaint them in the ins and outs of our district. And with respect to ongoing, Melville should continue to rely on our standards that are outlined in Desi. And again, this supports our teaching staff with a two-year mentoring program, not just for teachers, but for administrators, where we're partnering them to have that support within the first two years. And in an effort to capture this experience of our new staff, we in our office are looking for ways to understand how they are doing within the first 30, 60, 90 days, even in their first year or two years and beyond that, so that we can understand what additional supports our new staff may need. So for our classified staff, we have a 60-day probationary period set up for them where they are meeting regularly with their probationary or their supervisor, getting feedback on their performance for that 60-day performance as well. So employee engagement, gathering feedback from classified and certified staff allows the district to gauge current levels of employee motivation and engagement and isolate specific steps to increase this engagement. And currently, the district does use the Panorama tool as a measure of employee engagement, and we're currently looking at that as a baseline to determine what we can do in terms of positively measuring well-being and targeting belonging and sense of voice and ensuring that all of these things are being appropriately measured through these surveys and that we're able to have a long-range and a short-range plan of targeted tasks, if you would, to ensure that our staff feel valued in our district. So the concept of having a workforce that reflects and represents our student population is important. We have identified three approaches to making sure that our district is inclusive, equitable, and diverse workplace. And first, we look to increase this participation in community events with the diversity, culture, ethnicity, and language. And second, we build to a more diversified workforce. And of course, to do this, we must convince potential employees to apply for district openings. And second, we must continually improve our hiring process to value diversity by refreshing our interview questions and our overall hiring process, overall, like, to have people see, to want to come and work with us. And again, that's where you'll see the next steps. We're all recruiters. Every story that we tell, that's our Melville story. So we all have a story, a story of why, why we're here, and that's our Melville story, and it's unique, just like each one of our stories is unique. Each of our stories has a different reason to what landed and kept us in Melville, thus writing the My Melville Story. As we embark on the hiring season for certified staff and continue to recruit and retain classified staff, we ask that everyone share their My Melville Story with others. Your story is a piece of our story, and each of our unique stories positively contributes to assisting and attracting, recruiting, and retaining individuals. Giving credit to Hunter Robinson, our multi-communications, communications specialist, he began the My Melville Story series a few years back during his leadership development program for the district. As an aspiring leader, bringing awareness to the Melville staff, bringing awareness that a Melville staff does not necessarily reflect the diversity of the student population. Hunter knew the importance and he, that he must highlight and showcase the diversity we currently have within our schools to continue to attract and recruit a more diverse workforce. Over the course of the next several months, the district communications team will release the My Melville Story series. To give you a glimpse, here are two quotes from two of the 10 different stories that will be shared. "We encourage you to share your story with at least one other person, as we are all recruiters." In a My Melville Story that will be released this spring, Ben McCluskey, music teacher at Beasley Elementary School, talks about what keeps him here. "What keeps him here in Melville is the opportunities I've had," he said. "I've had a really supportive staff. I've had a really supportive principal. I've had the opportunities to try new things, to meet new people outside my building, to get involved in different initiatives, and the kids. This year especially, I have felt like the joy that comes from witnessing the joy that kids experience particularly when they're singing, and it comes through." Another My Melville Story is Fatima Warren, counselor at Trout Wine, was hired in Melville two years ago. Fatima speaks about her welcoming experience and what drew her to the district prior to even applying for her open position. Fatima shares in her words that "Melville had the same core values that I had as far as educating students, and that's giving back, service, just having gratitude for what you have. Since I have been here, I have been welcomed." And this is our story. This is one of the many stories that all of us share, and we hope that we all continue to share our story. Any questions?
I do have a question, thank you. As I was hearing you speak in regards to the mentorship program, it made me wonder, like, how structured is that program as far as what you make available to these mentors? And how do you then receive feedback from them? Is there something that's structured as far as the feedback that comes to you, or is it individualized per school?
So a lot of times between their mentor, they do have a checklist of items that they go through so that the mentor and the mentee go through those items, but that feedback doesn't necessarily come to us. But that is a structure that we are looking at, is how is that mentorship, how does it work? And then, do we feel like, are we getting that feedback from them to know if the mentee feels like that's beneficial for them to handle that, you know, to grow from that?
Okay. Okay. Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Very informative. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Next up is Community Survey Results, Jess Papilo.
Every two years, we go to our community and ask a series of questions, commissioning for the past five rounds, opinion research specialists to do this survey for us. This year, we did a mailed survey. In the past, we've done phone surveys. Opinion research specialists recommended a mail survey for a variety of reasons. One being that they're getting a better response rate to that than the phone surveys. People are screening calls, younger demographic especially, it's tough to get through to them. And also, they're finding that people are more honest in a mail survey. You don't have that person on the other end of the line that you may feel like you need to provide them the answer they want to hear. So this is our first year doing a mail survey. Survey was mailed to 5,000 randomly selected households with a frequent voter, and we did. define frequent voter as someone who's voted in the last two April general municipal elections, one of those elections. And one of those elections was actually in June due to COVID. We had over 1,100 surveys returned with a 25% response rate. It's a bigger response rate than we've had on several surveys, and as a result, the margin of error is plus or minus 3%, whereas in the past, it's been 5%. The survey was conducted throughout the month of November, so we started reaching mailboxes on November 9th. They continued to receive them back through the end of the month. We also had companion surveys, online surveys that anyone could fill out. Those were targeted towards the general community and also to our parents. And you'll see some of those results also included, but predominantly, we're looking at that frequent voter survey. Demographics of that, we had a bit more female respondents as this go around. The age skews older, as does frequent voters tend to be older, with the mean age at 63. About a quarter of the respondents had children in the Melville School District, and about a quarter of the respondents worked for Melville School District. Melville zip is defined as 63125 and 63123. Oakville zip is defined as 63129. So you'll see that the demographics broken out throughout the full report. I'm highlighting a few in this presentation. In addition to satisfaction ratings, this year, we asked for opinions associated with four proposals from the district and specific to a tax levy increase. So those four proposals, the first proposal involved asking how favorable or how much people would support increasing teacher salaries to become competitive in the region and to attract and retain high-quality teachers. 85% of respondents favored that proposal, between strongly favor and somewhat favor. The second proposal was increasing salaries for bus drivers, custodians, cooks, nurses, and other support staff to attract and retain these essential workers. We had 87% favoring that proposal. The third proposal was retaining interventionist teachers hired using federal COVID-19 relief funds set to expire at the end of the 2324 school year. And on that proposal, 74% of respondents favored that. And then finally, support services, continuing to provide other support services provided by COVID-19 relief funds set to expire 2324 school year, including after-school clubs, after-school tutoring, and mental health counseling support. And the respondents, 73% were supportive of that. And then we asked them what sort of tax rate increase they would support. This is a little bit of a tricky diagram to look at, so let me break that down a little bit. 30% of respondents would oppose a tax levy increase. 17% indicated they would support a levy increase of 49 cents. 51, sorry, let me, yep, I'm getting myself confused by this chart. 51% would support at least a 30-cent tax levy increase, and 70% would support a 17-cent tax rate increase. Of the no responses, we could kind of look at, at why they weren't supportive of that, and it kind of falls into two buckets, one being economic concerns, family budget concerns, inflation concerns, the same concerns we all have. And the other bucket would be unhappiness with district not understanding kind of what we do, and general concerns with the district. But as you can see here, we've got quite a number of respondents that would support some level of tax rate increase. And then we can break that down by demographic. Not surprising, parents, those with children in Melville School District, or younger residents, those who work for Melville School District, are more likely to support a tax levy increase at a higher amount than older members of our population and those that don't have kids in our district. Then we broke this down and compared it to the online survey results. So the first column is the frequent voter results that we just shared, and that's just the percent of strongly favoring. The second column is those that responded to the parent online survey, and then the third column is those that responded to the general public survey. So the parent survey, again, shows a stronger favorability for our four proposals, as does the general public response, but those general public respondents are somehow tied to the school district. They're following us on social media, they're subscribed to our email newsletter, they're reading Melville Messenger enough to start looking for that survey to come out. So they're pretty motivated and engaged with us. When we look at combining both strongly and somewhat favor, we see that the same trends emerge, but just at higher levels since it's somewhat and strongly together. And then when we look at the tax rate level increases, again, we see the same trends with stronger support with parents, and then stronger support with general public that are tied to us in some fashion. Then we go on to our satisfaction questions, which we've been asking for several years, starting in 2014. And those have sort of taken a dip this year from the highs that we saw in 2020. I wouldn't be surprised if many school districts saw dips like this coming out of the pandemic. The first question is, how satisfied residents are with us spending tax dollars? Tax dollars wisely, 76% were satisfied in the general public poll and in the parent poll, those results were higher. Providing a safe and secure environment for students, 87% of respondents were satisfied, that's down significantly from the past, and this survey also came right on the heels of the St. Louis Public School shooting. It also came on the heels of several lockdowns in our schools, so it could be why, why we saw that dip there. Planning for the future needs of our district is also down, but 79% of respondents are satisfied with our long-range planning efforts. We saw that dip a little bit in our general public poll, and it is higher in the parent survey. Keeping the public informed, if you're noticing a trend here, is down slightly as well, 78% of respondents were satisfied with keeping the public informed. And we have a breakdown of how people are getting their information on, one of the final slides. Preparing students for success in college and work, 76% of respondents were satisfied with our ability to prepare students for college or the workforce. And then setting high expectations for academic performance, 73% of respondents were satisfied with our expectations of student academic performance, again, down from previous highs that we saw. Resolving critical issues facing the district, 72% of respondents were satisfied with that. General public was down from that 72%, and the parent poll again was higher. Overall satisfaction, 79% of respondents were satisfied with Melville School District, which is down again from 2020 levels and 2018 levels. And the general public poll, 75% were satisfied, the parent poll, 82% were satisfied. So it will be interesting to follow these trends again when we survey in 2024 and see where, where we're at. I mentioned information sources. Melville Messenger remains a top way that we are communicating with our frequent voters in the community, as is the Call Newspaper, and of course, word of mouth, word travels fast in our community amongst neighbors and friends. District emails, that is growing, and it's strong amongst parents, as is social media and website. That is all I have on the community survey. Happy to try to answer any questions that weren't shared in the board notes.
I have one question. Jess, do you recall?
Oh, your microphone.
I thought I had it on. Do you recall what month in 2020 did we send out that survey?
That was done in November as well.
Was it? Okay. Thank you.
And it was a telephone survey.
That was a telephone survey.
And then also on eboards, because of one of our questions, there are links to the 2020, 2018, 2016, and 2014 surveys for everybody to look at for comparison reasons. One question out of curiosity that I did have is, on district emails, do we actually have email addresses for the community? How do we get those?
Yeah, around 2018, we started providing community members with signup forms on our website, so they can sign up to follow board notes, get alerts when board meetings are coming up, and get the board notes after. They can sign up for eMessenger, which is general, every other week, updates about the district. They can sign up for employment alerts, and they can sign up for community enrichment. So we have four email products. We also take email addresses we've collected from different events, and we've merged them all into one document now. So we have over 20,000 email addresses on file. Parents plus community members, our 60-plus club members, those who have used community enrichment in the past.
Great. Thank you.
We've got a question.
Yeah?
So, my apologies, admittedly, when I went through this prior to the board meeting, I was mainly interested in the tax levy information. I'm, I'm surprised at how this year versus previous years in terms of community satisfaction with the district has fallen off in nearly every category. That's really surprising to me, given the fact that I feel like our marketing and communications team has done wonderful work in terms of informing the, our populace about all the great things that's going, that are going on here. Here's a question, is there any thought that because this was an online versus a phone survey, are people maybe more willing to be, I don't know, harsh, or like, you know, through something online versus if you're talking to somebody? Is there any, is there any data related to that?
There is science behind that. When you have a person talking one-on-one with someone in person, we know that there's bias towards telling them what they think you want to hear, right? So if I'm asking you a question, you may respond to me saying what you think I want to hear. The same holds true with a phone survey, which is what we had done in the past. This one was predominantly mail survey. We didn't have that many returned online. People could go to a link and fill out the survey online and submit it, but predominantly, they responded using the stamped envelope that was provided. So yeah, there is science behind that.
Okay. And then, so for the other years, 18, 16, 14, were those all phone?
All phone.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Well, thank you very much. That was a lot of information.
Thank you.
And we appreciate it because it helps us guide our decisions. Next up is Prop S update, Dr. DeKemper.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. I am happy to report that there has been a tremendous amount of energy in our construction site since we last met, and that the pace of work being accomplished has increased. We'll see evidence of that tonight. We previously shared our green checkmarks for the Prop S work that has been completed. While we have not added any green checks yet, be prepared for that to happen soon. If you look at this work taking place in the schools, Beerbomb Elementary represents probably our most visually striking progress. To drive by is impressive. Brick work began taking place last week. Temporary windows are in, roofing is nearly complete, and they start drywalling on the inside of the addition this week. To walk through it is to really see a framed structure and what it represents for the school. Blades Elementary is also coming along nicely. You see two representations here, those were taken earlier this week. Some of the work on the inside of the school is close to being done, and the entrance is making great progress as well. So you'll see evidence of tile and ceiling work. Some of the cabinetry, the remote terminal units and HVAC should be arriving in January. And with that, we expect to begin phases of occupancy early in 2023, and that would include the art room, the nurse's office, the teacher's lounge, and we'll get folks in as quickly as we can as that work is completed, our punch list will take place. There's been a tremendous amount of effort around bid package four, which includes OES, Bernard, and Rogers. And to look at Bernard from where it was a month ago, we have the storefront, the glass installed, painting is done. The electricians started earlier this week, they were back at 6:45 this morning, so that work should be done soon. We conducted our punch list, and anytime you do a punch list, you find things that you really want done to satisfaction. So now it's a matter of quality on some issues before we sign off on the projects, and with that, we expect the fire alarm testing to take place on the 19th. Oakville Elementary is probably a bid package for the school that is closest to being added to that list of green checkmarks. So there's been a tremendous amount of work being done. I believe the electrical work was finished. We were, we were trying out the doors and the locks when we were there. The fire alarm testing again takes place on 12/19. We are holding them off because they're so eager to get into the office, but as soon as that fire alarm inspection takes place and our punch list item that was identified is completed, they'll be able to get in there. And at Rogers Elementary, if you have a chance, go down and look at that, they've already decorated. The framing is complete, the ramp and the stairway work is completed. Dr. Kinoi is standing there. Proud principal greeting students. That fire alarm testing should take place on the 19th. There is some sod work that we, we anticipate will be completed in the spring. However, they're saying they may be able to get it done. We're watching temperatures to see if that actually happens that quickly or not. And what's next? If it were light outside, you would be able to see the scale of work being done in our ball fields. And we have continued to engage stakeholder voice in our design process, so when it comes to Beerbomb Phase Two, we're including librarian representatives of the school, we're asking for their opinion in our planning process. We're going, I'm joining Dr. Gaines as he visits each school and really just prepares the schools that are next in line for disruption and some of the challenges that might be faced. We've also shared the experience of some principals with others so that they can prepare their staffs from a principal lens. So there's a lot taking place, and there's a lot we're going to prepare for that. Our upcoming bids have not changed, so we remain on track to do Beerbomb Phase Two in January, and some of the other schools listed there as well throughout July. And then thank you to Marshall and his team for updating our finances. With that, I'll answer any questions that you have.
It's good to see we're making progress that's both visual and, and helpful, because it's a good way to point at something and say, look, this is what we're doing, this is where we're at. So it makes the community a little more understanding of, you know, this has been slow, but some of this has obviously been well outside of control and other things just happened because they happened the way they did. So it's good that we're making visual progress, and it's good that we're making progress to actually put some of these down and check them off.
Scott?
So the, with the upcoming bids, the largest bid that we're going to have is Beerbomb Phase Two, is that right?
Yes, sir.
So how, how soon do we need to approve that for the work to be completed by when we would want it to be completed by?
We anticipate that we'll have bids either in the February, the 2nd of February, or the March.
Oh, I see, it's going out for bid in January. Okay. All right. The only reason I ask is because I know that's the most expensive one we've got left, and then we've got these other pieces that are less expensive. So deciding on the most expensive thing first might, if we, if we approve something, it might, I just want to make sure we've got enough money for the other projects that are behind it, that are smaller dollar figure. So is there any way to, I mean, this, this is the schedule, we can't rearrange that at all, is that right?
We feel like this addresses Beerbomb, which is our big rock.
Gotcha. All right.
Okay. Anybody else? And thank you very much. I'm pretty excited seeing the progress. Future ballot issue, Dr. Gaines.
All right. Good evening. Okay, so as it was stated earlier, we've kind of been asking this question of what kind of school district does the community want, and, you know, especially thinking out well into the future. And we've had a number of discussion around a possible future ballot issue. We've talked about what our current year's S value is and what that generates in terms of revenue for a penny of tax rate. You've seen the relative costs of these Esser items for quite some time, the The salary pieces have been a little bit undetermined, a little bit. We have on eBoard a salary comparison report that's quite lengthy that answers that and I'll layer those in a little bit later. At our last time, we kind of drilled in on what I thought were probably more appropriate dates to be thinking about the possibility of these items as well as kind of reminding the decision deadlines to hit different election dates. As well as we've talked about and mentioned and shown what different rates of, what difference amounts of penny and that impact on folks' tax bill. We've also talked about, you know, when kind of to do things, what those options are and, you know, kind of the windows for some of these things as well as kind of the more detailed cost, if you think about an à la carte approach to decision-making and what things to fund. We've shared the ballot language from Prop R, just an example of what that looks like as well as what ballot language looks like just from a larger generic standpoint. And then we kind of wrapped up last time with questions around to think about what do we include on a ballot measure, you know, how that looks? Is it two different ballots, is it one? Do we include some operational safety items? When do we ask and those things? So going back to this idea of having things to consider and when to go and the possibilities of when things could be asked over the next couple of years. So we, I want to drill down on the capital side of that kind of first. We've talked with our financial advisors and bonding company to give some estimates. So these are the numbers as of a couple of weeks ago. As we get closer to these dates, these numbers will change, you know, they're going to fluctuate a little bit. So thinking about just a bond, if we were to go out for a bond in April of '24 and just using the existing 12 cents, we could do something, you know, around, you know, under 13 million. If we waited a year, still keeping with that same 12 cents, we could take that up to just over 14. However, if we took the four cents from Prop A and rolled that into a bond, that brings those numbers up. So basically it doubles them, right? Each of those numbers, so we're looking at, if you look at possibility of doing more like 25 or 28. We also asked, what if we went big? And what would that generate or what would it take? So we asked, what if we did 100 million bond? In the lead up to Prop S, we identified over $200 million in projects. Prop S is 35 million, so we've got a lot left to do. So depending on which year we would go, it's going to be somewhere around 40 cents in the next couple of years to go at 100 million. Just using that kind of as a basis for planning and thinking. So if you look at then options on the lower half here, the lower portion of this, it's what are our options? So we could go, if we ended Prop A and shifted that into a bond, we could go for 25 and a half. Or at the same time, we could just go for almost 13, staying with the 12 cents. Or we could go big and it would, we would need to add another 40 cents for 100 million. And then you can see the similar numbers if we waited a year to do that. So after kind of laying kind of all of that around, where my thinking is as of today, and this could evolve, is think about roughly that 14 million dollar bond in 2025. Doing that within the existing 12 cents. As you know, we've eliminated some projects from Prop S, so those would be kind of first priority as we think about a new bond and then other minor projects. Because really 14 is not going to get us a lot and we have a lot that's out there. Then think about a larger bond somewhere out there, you know, in 2029 or 2030. 100 million, doesn't have to be that number, but something of significance to really make a dent. And then really going back and forth, taking a look at, probably the best option is to extend Prop A in 2026 and extend that as a capital levy currently. I mean, that's what it is specifically for roofs and HVAC. Keeping that same piece, but kind of knocking out that notion of a, having a sunset date, if you will. Because if you look at what that four cents generates and you think about 2025, if we pulled it into a bond issue in 2025, we could take the bond up to roughly 28. Well, Prop A, over 20 years, that four cents would generate about 14 million. So that would be 14 million in roofs and HVAC work that we could do over that time for which we would be paying no interest versus we would in a bond. So that's kind of the reasoning for laying it out like that. So if we look at those capital possibilities kind of all together, right? We did that April 21, that was Prop S, we moved 12 cents, that was 35 million. Thinking about keeping, using that same 12 cents to do about 14, maybe hopefully a little bit more in 2025, coming back in '26, extending that Prop A. Today, that generates about 700,000, that, you know, that's going to fluctuate. And then something large in, you know, '29 or '30, which is probably going to cost 30 cents or more if we're still in that 100 million dollar range. So again, going back to the notion of what kind of school district does the community want? And every time we go to the ballot, the community makes a decision and based on the community's decision at that point, we recalculate and reimagine what's possible. So then as, if we go back to that notion of à la carte with ESSER and we add in the salary pieces, we can see that if we just do kind of the pure calculation, we come in at about 38 cents. And that is especially noting anything salary related, whether that's the interventionist or trying to get to a competitive salary. Those are costs in the current year. So therefore we put in an escalator. And then for each of those, then we rounded up to what that was in terms of pennies for that particular item instead of having all of these strange back fractions. So really we're, you know, if you look at everything in total, it's roughly in that 50 cent range to do all of those items. So if we think about each of those and layer in historical information, when we went to voters with Prop S, we had done a survey beforehand. That survey showed about, you know, 67% of our population was favorable for doing that. The voter results were 80% approval. For Prop R, we had asked questions at different amounts. So at 45 and 55, we went in the middle at 49, that's what we asked, and we got 72. So what we can tell from these two examples and data sets is that when we enter with a favorability rating of over 50%, our advocacy efforts by advocacy committees then even bring that up a little bit more, at least in those two examples which are the most recent. So then if we look at the four broad areas for which we had asked, and Jessica Phillo presented these earlier, but to just layer them in here, we had high favorability rates, well over 50% on all four items. So then if you kind of then layer all of that in with that à la carte piece that I've shown and kind of break them into kind of some groupings and having certified and classified salaries with those favorability ratings, all of the interventionists asked together with that favorability rating and cost, and then the after-school supports, then we have some items that we didn't ask about, right? They're smaller items, they're not as significant as items and probably things that, you know, a layperson wouldn't necessarily know that we were kind of doing those things. So when we look at the ESSER pieces, we went back to our administrators and asked them within elementary, middle and high school kind of rank those ESSER pieces in really where they believe they find the most value. So for elementary, the interventionist data supports and after-school supports ranked high. For middle school, the interventionist, the after-school and the data supports ranked high. And for the high school, it was Chad's, the interventionist, and the after-school supports were ranking the highest. Right? So then if we pull those in, what we see are that the top ESSER items to maintain then are the interventionists, the after-school and Chad's and the data supports. So really it was the data supports that were the only thing that we didn't ask about and that's a relatively small amount. So if we then layer in with that, the salary pieces, then we can begin to see what those calculations are along with those favorability ratings. If you look at all of that kind of overall, then the needs would tend to be about 26 or 27 cents for salaries. About 13 cents would fund the interventionist, six to seven cents for the after-school supports and about a penny for the data. So somewhere between, you know, that 46 to 48 range, which again is very close to the 50 or so that was mentioned earlier. Jessica also noted from the survey where the level of supports were at different levy amounts on the survey. So if we layer that in with the other information, if we look at salaries, salaries is a cost of about 27 cents, favorability was over 80. The levy favorability because the salaries is between 17 and 30 and we had 70% at 17 and 30, and 51% at 30 cents. We layered it, that levy favorability is probably in there somewhere. The ESSER interventionist being the lower amount at, a lower amount at 13 cents with 74% favorability. And because that levy is under 17 cents, a high favorability on the levy side. And then the other pieces, you can see those numbers there. So coming back to this notion of board decisions and what options kind of lay out and taking this and layering in this new information, then it, we layered the bond pieces or the capital pieces I had talked about. And then so we're looking at 27 and 21 cents to fund those ESSER items in an ongoing way, right? So we come back to the notion of when to ask, right? So for salaries, we get to ask as soon as April. If we don't do that in April, it's just going to be more pennies the further down the road we go. For the levy, for the ESSER pieces, you know, that's a little, it's around 21 cents today. That will grow over time, but it's not going to grow like the salaries will. The ESSER piece has a small salary. So again, the same kinds of questions, do we put them together on the same ballot, one ballot language for both of them? Do we separate and ask for levies and salary, or sorry, ESSER and salaries as separate items? Do we ask, but both on the same ballot? Do we ask for them separately and at different times? Do we ask them for them at the same time but phase in? So do part of the levy one year and part of the levy the next year, but phase that in? Do we include operational safety items in there? Just because that seems to be popular, does that help garner support? So going back to the ballot language, what we've got to fill in is for the purposes of blank and fund it by increasing it to what amount, right? And then that gives us the estimated amount. So in order to get something on the April 4 ballot, the decision has to be made by January 24th. We have a meeting scheduled on January 19th, so that meeting is sufficient to fulfill that deadline and for us to get it to the county. Don't want to go in April, want to look at November, August 29 is the deadline, right? Doesn't have to be, that decision doesn't have to be made in August, that's just the latest that it could be made, right? And for what amount and for what purposes? So again, if we look at it visually, when to ask for 27 cents? If you want to ask for 27 cents, higher amount, a lower amount? For the ESSER funded positions, when to ask at that amount, at a higher amount, together separately? Which way is it going to be? Again, going, here's kind of the à la carte piece to take a look at and then it really becomes for the next three election possibility dates, what, if anything, do you want to ask for and when do you want to ask for it? So with that, I will attempt to answer any questions that you might have. And if you ask me questions that are just too big of a guess and we don't know, we do have a magic eight ball tonight.
That's good.
I have a question. Can you remind us if something was, when something is placed on the ballot, if in fact it passes, what's, how long before that money is able to be utilized? Like when does that come? How, what's the lag time?
So since we have the April and the November ballots on, that's the easiest to tell, right? So if we went in April of '23, then the levy, and it passed, then when the board set the tax rate in September of '23, it would be on tax bills that come that fall. And so we would see the first revenue in December of '23, right? Then we would see more in January. That's pretty much where that would come. So if we pass something in April, we would have the money for next school year. If you wait until November, you set in November, you're not going to set the tax rate until 10 months later, the following September. So it's going to be the year after. So for most, the easiest thing to think about is if it, if you're asking in April, it's going to be the next school year. If you're asking in November, it's going to be the next school year. If you ask in August, which we eliminated those dates just in these, to see this, if you ask in August and it passes, you're setting the tax rate a month later and it can be the same year. So August is kind of the anomaly in that respect. Hopefully that made sense. Okay.
Just maybe repeat what you just said so we can hear it. Just that last part in regards to the...
All right, so, all right, so let me try to explain it this way.
Okay.
April is at the end of one school year.
Right.
Which enables with a passage to get revenue the next school year.
So if it were April '23, revenue for '23, '24? Or, yes, okay. Got it. But November would be passed when we set the tax?
Yes.
So we would be talking '24, '25?
The tax rate, we have to set the tax rate in September and that is the hinge that everything acts on.
Okay.
So if you get it before September?
Yes.
Then you can get the tax revenue that fall. If it's after that September, you've got to wait another year.
Okay. That makes sense. Does that make sense?
Go ahead.
I mean, I guess you need to get it before you approve the budget though too, right?
I mean, I guess you need to get it before you approve the budget though, too, right? Is that?
Budget approval is statutory required by June 30th.
Okay. I'm sorry, I've got one other question. So the one document that you shared, and I'm sure I missed something here, said that we needed 22 cents for competitive salaries, but the one that you got here said 27 cents. So what's the nickel difference?
Oh, probably could have had it earlier than that. So you can see the pure tax rate calculation is the number in the document, and for the purposes of this conversation, well, let me go back to the document. We need that amount of salary this year to be competitive, so that's what our tax rate needs to be this year. So in thinking about next year, we included an escalator for that, and then after we escalated each one of those, then we rounded it up to the nearest cent, right? Because you need 13.26 cents to do that. 13 is not enough, so you round to 14 because you're going to ask for whole cents.
Gotcha, and the escalator total was based off of cost of living or inflation rate, or what were those escalators based off of?
Well, to some extent, it's an inflationary rate of, based on the tax rate, not on the cost.
Okay. So in theory, the 27 cents should better ensure that we're competitive for the next at least couple years into the future.
Correct.
Okay.
And the 20, another rationale around the escalation is not only do you have to catch up, then you have to sustain it, right? So the 27 makes it a little bit more comfortable to sustain it. But as you say, we don't know how long that will remain competitive, largely because we don't know what anybody else is going to do.
Well, they're, I mean, they're already competitive, we're not. So in theory, we'll, you know, hopefully we're the only ones that are looking at that sort of raise because everybody else is really competitive.
Dr. Gaines, what was the, I'm sorry, I can't, can't see the one. I hope I could get these on in hard copy to really study, but what did you say the cents were on the ESER funding only for that? 13 cents, is that what you said? I was trying to write it down as I heard it, but I.
So the interventionist is 13.
13, okay.
The after-school supports, about 7, and then the data supports is about a penny for a total of 21 for the ESER pieces.
21 cents, okay.
Which, if you go back to the à la carte, what we ended up eliminating in that was the supplies piece and the kindergarten program and the additional ACS.
Okay, and finally, of the $200 million worth of facility improvements that we need to make, and we're currently at 37, I mean, that we, you know, we had 37 to work with this time around, what would the cent amount be to be able to cover even half of those other facility improvements that we need to take care of?
Well, you know, just ballparking, if you think that we would need, so, 35 off the, the 200-ish, and it was more than 200.
Yeah.
So you're still at 165 million, right? So you need another 65, so, you know, you're looking at 65, you're, the rough back of the napkin math is then going to be 65% of roughly 40 cents, so what, you're looking at 25, you know, around another quarter, so probably something 65, 70 cents to go really big.
Right, right, well.
But, you know, if you think about St. Louis County, you think about tax rates, right? We always show that ours is low, part of that is a debt levy. Our debt levy is really low compared to everybody else.
Yes, it is.
And we know that just a few weeks, you know, just a little over a month ago, with no change in their tax rate, Parkway passed 260 something million dollars to improve their facilities. So once you have that rate in place, then your ability to draw from that and continue to invest in facilities is really significant. But like so many other things, we're playing catch-up.
Yep. So this might be a good time to remind us in the community how long it had been since we passed any tax levies, 28, 30 years?
So 92 was the last bond issue, 2000 was the lease, and then, yeah, Prop R was the increase that restored a lot of the cuts that had been made over the years leading up to that, but not all of those, and then it had been a while before that, or anything had passed.
So.
But I, I think though, at least my perception was that there's been this historical perception that the community doesn't support salaries, and I think this survey may have set that on its head to go, it, I mean, certainly the labor market is tighter now than it has been, and there's been more media around that, and certainly, you know, we've got signs all over the place about how we're trying to hire, you know, and we had a lot of openings, but I think that high rate of favorability for competitiveness in salaries and to recruit and retain, I think that was a little higher than what we were anticipating.
So if we don't go in April '23, and we wait until August or Septem, or August or November, and I understand that then we don't get the funding until the next school year, can we, knowing that the money comes, automatically give our staff those raises, or does it have to wait until the next year?
So if a levy passes, if we, if we put something on the ballot in April for salaries, and if it passed, we will not realize any revenue from that until November, or, sorry, December, that's when we'll get our first tax check. So yes, we could give salary increases for next year, however, this is why we need healthy balances, because we will be spending at a higher rate for the first half of the fiscal year, so having the money in the bank to be able to do that then is important, so that we wouldn't have to do short-term borrowing for that. So in the end, if we passed in April, yes, we would want to raise salaries for next school year.
Okay, but so, but to clarify, so August or November, we absolutely could not raise salaries and use some of our reserves. We would have to wait till the next school year.
Yes.
No matter what.
August is tricky, because you'd have, if we waited until August, we would have to adopt a budget with no big raises without running a crazy risk. And then the ballot would be in early August, and there is the slight then potential that for most, for many of our employees, they would not have started their contracts yet, and those salaries could be raised.
And then theoretically, we couldn't negotiate on any contracts until, if we decided to go in April, we would obviously wait until after that to finish negotiations on contracts?
I.
On staffing contracts?
Yeah, but, you know, I mentioned at a finance committee meeting, just a few people, I don't even know if I'd start until after we knew.
After the, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. So not, don't do any, oops, sorry, any negotiating, okay. One more question, I'm sorry. Operational safety, is that number even included in the salary proposal? So that would be a whole nother, do we have any idea how many cents that would take, or I don't even know.
Well, I mean, we know a penny generates around 220,000, so depending on what we wanted to do, it's not, that's not too difficult of a calculation, to be able to layer that in.
To add more security in our buildings through people.
Yeah, I mean, part of that, you know, you know, if we wanted to have a standalone safety coordinator, or if we wanted to accelerate our camera rollout in our elementary schools.
Okay.
I know with the ESER piece, obviously we're funded until the end of '23, '24.
Correct.
But obviously, if staff is assuming that if it's not funded, then their positions will most likely be eliminated, we can step that out, just because the funding is there until '23, '24 ends, but I think from a stability standpoint, it would be better to have that piece in place, would it not? For the funding for the ESER positions.
Well, that's why I kind of talk, or kind of ask around the phase-in. So if you, sorry, I don't, sure, want to try to get to here. So if you think about the 27 cents for salaries, we would want that for fiscal year '24, for the '23, '24 school year, in order to raise salaries. If you think about the ESER, the ESER is completely funded through FY '24. We don't need that until FY '25, hence the notion of perhaps the phased-in idea of you ask for it all at once, but you don't tax it all at once. Tax the salary piece for FY '24, and you tax, begin the tax on the ESER piece for FY '25, and gone. If you wanted to put them together on the same ballot in basically April or August.
So from a, from a functional standpoint, if you split them up and say you did the ESER piece in April '24, you could also do it in April of '23, but have ballot language that says it won't take effect until the year later after it's voted in.
Potentially, yes.
But the downside of that is, of course, if you essentially look like you're asking for 49 cents, and obviously the public has said that seems to be a little high, then it might be better from a perception standpoint to possibly split them out rather than phasing them in, because they'll read the ballot as a 49-cent piece and say no, even when it's not really, because it steps in a year later.
That wasn't a question.
Go to the old notion of, you know, in scout training, we often tell people to keep it simple, so as, the more complicated you get it, or the more complex, it gets harder for people to understand. So I think as a general rule, probably the more straightforward we can be, probably maybe the better. It's certainly simpler, I think, for any advocacy group to advocate for, if things are pretty simple.
So in that case, siloing them in separate years would make sense in that respect.
That would seem to be simpler, rather than trying to do any level of phase-in or anything. Those are just options, right? And that's kind of what the board has to decide, which, which option do we want, right? How many pennies do we want to ask for, if any? Or what do we want to use that, those pennies? When do we want to ask, and how do we want that question to be asked? So what we will do, if, you know, the feeling is that April is a possibility, is we'll bring a number of options of ballot language for you for January.
I think I'm in favor of siloing these and not asking for ESER and salaries in the same year, but if we wanted to ask for salaries and interventionists and all the ESER programs in April, and if it passed, ESER, all of the interventionist and all of the ESER-funded programs are already funded for next year, so what would that extra revenue go towards for this next budget?
It would, more than likely, go to a question that you asked earlier, when Dr. DeKempere was up here, and that is that we could probably shift all of that ESER money that's slated to be spent in FY '24 to capital and be able to offset some Prop S expenses. Now, we have to get DESI approval for that, but we've not had any issue getting approvals on especially HVAC-related things, and knowing what other districts have been, have gotten approved, I, that's probably the easiest piece that fits within the ESER, and it helps the Prop S piece, is to shift that to capital.
I mean, we already did that with some of the ESER funding anyway, so.
Yes.
There's already a road that we've gone down on that, so it should be an easy change in that respect, if that happens and everything falls into place.
That does keep it away from keeping things simple for the general public to understand, I think, because we're asking for, in theory, the language would be for keeping salaries competitive and for ESER-related activities. Well, I mean, we can't even do that this year because ESER's already paid for, you know, so I don't know, it's just a thought.
I mean, the other thing, I mean, if you.
Well, the alternative would be going back again next year and asking for.
Right.
Yeah, and I think that's the best solution, but, I mean, I know everybody's got different.
You do think so?
I do. I think it keeps it, I think it keeps it simpler, and I'd rather hedge our bets on making sure that we're getting our salaries competitive. I'd like to fix that problem. That's been a systemic problem we've had for years, and I think if we can hedge our bets and make sure that we address that, and we have the best opportunity of having it passed, I, I would like, I mean, I think that's a very valid way to consider this.
Wait, am I, I may be misunderstanding you. I'm thinking one and done.
I'm thinking one, one this April, one next April. That was what part of the discussion at the finance meeting was yesterday.
I mean, I think that, you know, we, we could look that passed for Prop R and Prop S, and knowing that we polled at a percentage, and the community came in at a higher support percentage, I could believe that probably will fall through in this, which means 17 cents, that's probably not an issue, but obviously that doesn't get us where we need to be. 30 cents is probably a safe assumption, knowing that we polled at 51% support on that, and it's likely to go higher. When you start going at the 40% mark, do I think the polling would skew so that actually would pass? Maybe. So if we try and keep it under the perceptual points that the public has said we're good with, siloing it makes sense across two different years, and it also simplifies it, as we've said.
Well, that's going to take a lot of discussion and thought.
Oh, yes.
So I guess we'll leave it there for now.
We have plenty of ballot language we can kick around.
Right.
Uh, so while we're here, Jean brings that up, discussion to be had. Are we going to do that tonight, or do we want to do that in January? Because like, we, obviously, it doesn't sound like we're voting on anything tonight because we still have the January board meeting, so that's the one we'll come lock and locked and loaded for?
So.
Because we need ballot language.
So what, what you would be voting on is the ballot length. We really don't need anything up until that, really don't need any action up until that point. It will take board action to do the ballot length. So as I mentioned, what, we will prepare multiple options for ballot language to review, to take a look at and select which one. So, and we've already started working with our attorneys on that, so.
All right, and so I've just, my interpretation of how I thought this was going to go was we would not decide tonight, but then if I know that there's going to be, I don't know, I'm throwing out a number, like, three or four proposals at the next one, and then we'll vote for which one we want to move forward, right? Yep, all right, cool.
Narrow down, narrow it down to one motion, I would imagine.
And then we vote yes or no on that motion, okay.
And so I think if you don't mind, Dr. Gaines, if you could share this presentation with everybody tomorrow, I think that will help.
Yes.
Everybody have that in front of you. I, I mean, personally, I have started a Google folder with all of the information he's provided us through the last few months, so I can share that with everybody if you want me to, all of his presentations so far.
Yes, please.
So it's, it's nice to be able to open up that folder and see it all in front of you and refer back, because most of these questions we're asking him have been answered in previous. in previous presentations. But I know it's hard to keep track of, so. Anybody else? The one thing I will add is, we did have finance committee, like you guys all mentioned, and finance committee reviewed everything, the surveys and the, um, the salary comparisons, and they agreed that we did not have budget for, to bring our employees up to where the, where we should be, and that we should, they reinforced that we should be going and asking the voter to decide what they want to see out of their own district. So, anybody else? All right, that's it, I think. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next is advocacy priorities. Is that you, Jeff?
I guess it will be me.
All right.
Now, in the charter for the advocacy committee, there's a deliverable that's required by November 30th to be presented at this meeting about the advocacy priorities for the upcoming legislative session, which starts in early January. This is a document that has gone through multiple different revisions from last year to this year, and will obviously continue to proceed. It, at a high level, was basically, starts at items that the advocacy priorities for the district should, for the board should be, broken up into categories of legislative mandates, school safety and security, open enrollment, healthcare, pre-K, internet access, and then we added one at the end in recent discussion for English, English language learners, because obviously, our district has a significantly high EL requirement for all the languages we have that are non-English, and all the students that need assistance with that. So this basically establishes our positions, either opposes or supports on those items. And they were on eboards. If you have any questions, please feel free.
Thank you, Jeff.
Anybody have anything? All right. Um, if I could please get a motion to approve the advocacy priorities as presented.
So moved.
Oh, sorry.
Do you?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay, next up is the COVID-19 resolution. Dr. Gaines, again, I guess.
Yes. So if we go back in time, we had set meetings through the holidays to meet that kind of requirement around re-upping the resolution every 21 days. And that was kind of all that we scheduled, was through the first semester, so that we could see. So I'm going to share some data with you tonight on COVID, RSV, and flu, and kind of what, what we experienced. So this is countywide data from, from the health department. We, all of this, other than our internal data, this all came from a, a meeting we had with, we regional superintendents had with Dr. Rachel Orshlin from Wash, Wash U and St. Louis Children's Hospital. She's been someone who's consulted with districts all throughout, all throughout the pandemic. So the yellow represents what's happening, been happening with COVID in the, in the county. You can see that green was what we experienced last year with that big spike in, right after the new, right after the holidays, essentially. But overall, much lo, um, much lower than where we were two years ago, and lower than where we were a year ago. We'll look at what's been happening with hospitalization data, that's certainly been kind of maintaining itself at a much lower level than where we were, you know, 11 months ago or so. And if we look at COVID deaths across the US, we can see much lower than where we were in November, the two prior Novembers or December, this, this time of the year. If we look at RSV, that's the yellow line. Other years are the other colored lines. You see that we certainly had that big spike at the end of September, first part of October. Our attendance showed that in terms of what we could see. We had a pretty good drop, we had a little bit of a bump back up here at the first part of December. But flu has been like off the charts, almost, when you look at what flu has done compared to prior years. It is earlier, and it is more intense, right? We've got more folks. So between RSV and the flu, we have seen the result through both employee and student attendance dealing with COVID. So if we, again, kind of looking at in the flu, this is kind of, you know, breaks the year up into the numbered weeks of the year. We can just see that in the flu cycle, we're earlier overall. I don't have it in here, but one of the things that Dr. Orshlin did share is when it, when they're trying to predict flu in the northern hemisphere, they look at what happened in the southern hemisphere. And so she shared data from Australia and their experience with flu over their winter, which is our summer. And it went up fast, and stayed high for a bit, and then it came down fast. However, that whole time span was still 90 to 120 days. So it was, you know, the full winter, if you will. If you look at our internal data on COVID, we've had pretty low numbers throughout. You know, we, we had some high pieces right at the start of school, but since then, we, we've really settled in. We've had no building that hit, no, no building with students that's hit that one and a half percent threshold other than scope. So it's really down to, the only ones hitting the one and a half percent are the low population buildings, where one case can throw us over. So it's JB, Whittsville, and Central Office that are typically hitting above the 1.5%. So if we think about how we move forward at this point, we can not change anything, we can keep adopting the resolution as is every 21 days. That would, however, necessitate some additional virtual meetings to be able to align that 21-day cycle with the board calendar. So we would need meeting probably on January 5th, and another one on April 6th, so that we get that cycle. That's an option. Another option is to just kind of do the resolution a final time to go, this is effective through the remainder of the year, that basically, we're just sending out these notifications is pretty much all we're doing at this point. However, our nursing staff believes that we could evolve that health services masking requirement from when patients are present to when respiratory illness is present, instead of just patients. Or we could just eliminate it altogether and work within the policies of, that, that we have, and are named in the resolution. So really, kind of three options that we've outlined. So we provided a resolution that has no change. We provided a resolution that has kind of number two and three, if you will, among these items, and then eliminating it would be, it just mean, you don't take any action, or the board doesn't take any action. So here's the kind of, the modified language for that kind of combination of two and three, is to add or change these pieces in yellow and eliminate the piece in red. So just, we adopt these things to be effective through the end of the school year. And so in a clean copy, it looks like that. But with that, I'll try to answer any questions that you may have. So really, we got one of three options that the board needs to select. And one of, option one, if you will, of maintaining what we've been doing, just we'll, we'll have to set those two other meetings. We can do those via Zoom. There you go. I'll try to answer any questions that you have.
So if we adopt the, the resolution dated December 15th of '22, which extends it to June 30th of '23, then what happens hypothetically, we can never ha, is it, my understanding, we can't make another resolution really ever, because we did not?
Six months.
Six months, okay.
That's, that's the common belief. However, there still is one lawsuit lingering out there. And if we got determination of that lawsuit, that could stick at the six, or we could be able to do whatever.
And theoretically, if we wanted to keep the August 4th resolution, we could, we could change the masking requirements in the health rooms also, right?
Yes. I mean, the previous number five says that we're mask optional, right? So we're just like, if we're going to do another resolution, just take that out.
Right.
Right? But yes, we could change the number six. Just, which way y'all want to go?
I mean, I think, you know, that six month is because of House Bill 271 that precipitated this constantly going. So if we do go to a six-month one, it's possible that it could be legally challenged and kicked down. But there's been so many lawsuits that were filed on this that magically disappeared, when public interest seemed to magically disappear, then would it happen? Probably not. Could it happen? Yes. Plus also, the individual that's precipitated most of those lawsuits is moving to higher office, and his replacement seems to follow his methodology. So it's, it's possible we could get something from the new guy.
Functionally, however, at some point, we can't continue to do this every 21 days. We, we have to move to, we're just working under existing policy. That has to happen at some point. So we're going to kick in this theoretical six-month thing somewhere.
And I'm good with that. I think it's time to move on. You know, and I think that the, the issue now is no longer COVID, but it's every other communicable disease that known to God, you know, or mankind. And I think that, you know, but it's.
And my policy that I have to move on. Scott?
Where did the date, the date June 30th come from? Could it be May 30th or July 30th?
June 30th takes us through the end of summer school.
Okay.
And the end of fiscal year.
Grace?
Let's do that. What do you say, Grace?
I like getting, I like that. Number six, I'm not too keen on, because every other health service building in Missouri requires masks at all times, whenever you walk in. I haven't been to one that doesn't require a mask, so.
In the health, health rooms, yeah.
I, I think that we should keep, keep the old number six.
You, you mentioned that, that was encouraged by the nurses, though, that language, by our nurses?
To eliminate masking in the health rooms?
I want to add in the line, add in line six that's up there, it's highlighted.
The current language says when patients are present. And given.
I like that.
That the respiratory illness is the challenge, that was the change that came from them.
Yeah. And, and, you know. To your point, it could be, though, that, I'm, and I'm just thinking about other doctors. The nurses probably see lots of students for a headache, or, and you're not going to be in a doctor's office when your child has, right?
I am always at the doctor's office without an illness with my daughter. Like, the last few times, it's, there's been checkups, or for other things.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I think I was trying to say, like.
We have to wear the mask.
What they probably see in their health rooms, I'm, I'm making an assumption, though, is going to be more than what generally you're going to take to a regular doctor, because these are students that are within school and healthy enough to have gone to school that day. That's all I was pointing out.
I do get that.
Well, you know, start of sanitizing the health room after every guest, you know, we, there's a clear and present danger that if, if a kid comes in, in third or second grade with RSV, that something's going to get contaminated.
Well, I was just making that point, because the nurses recommended this language.
Right.
So I, yeah. And so I think that's important to note.
So we should go with what the nurses have requested in that, in that item?
So since, since we have all these options on the table, do I make a motion for one? Do we decide what motion I'm going to make first?
So we've got, really, I'll, I'll go back to three options that we presented, right? One is to continue it as is. Two, and that resolution is on eboard, right? We also have a resolution that is this, clean language. And the third option is not take any action, and then we essentially go to policy EBV and GBE as what we work, we work within those frameworks.
I'd say, take no action, let the nurses do what they want in health rooms.
Well, they'd have to follow.
No, because, yeah.
Which does include mask and.
Oh, oh, okay. So we, they couldn't ask, request that and just.
If it's not in our.
If it's not in the policy. Okay, so let's do that. What do you think? Is that reasonable?
What was that? Specifically, this, the one where it says.
The way you just explained it, just to make sure I understand it, is the existing resolution that requires us to vote every 21 days, you want to not move that one forward again.
Let go that.
And then you want to move forward the modified one, this one, that would have the language to June 30th.
The alternative one, but with the change.
Okay. So make sure I understand what you were explaining.
I mean, is that, that would be my preference. What do you all?
Well, we'll vote on it.
Yeah. As you're anymore.
What do we, so what happens if this one, if we vote on this one, and what happens after June 30th? Do we have to have another vote to extend it? I mean, it, when it just automatically disappears?
Yes.
For six months, or at least, yeah.
It will expire at the end of June 30th.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then we go back.
That's a way, this, this one was written with an expiration date.
And then we revert back to what was, uh, policy is for all health situations.
And we're operating under policy.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, I'm sorry, but how is this different than if we just take no action and it disappears? Because right now, we're saying that through the end of the year, we're going to be mask optional.
It would be the notifications of COVID exposure, that we go out and it would be masking in the nurses' room.
Oh, I got you. Okay, mainly notification.
Right. If we just revert back to policy, those pieces don't exist.
And then at the end of six months, you know, we can, could look at it again if there's, you know, another issue that we need to address, so, yeah.
Can I just say one more thing? I'm sorry. So like, every nurse has to wear a mask, like, every nurse in other hospitals and facilities have to wear a mask around patients, so. And I know that a lot of these are headaches and, and all that, but I think that it's a normal part of a nurse's job to wear a mask. I mean, if, if I could hear directly from them, or have a, some sort of writing, like, maybe I would, you know, change my mind.
Uh, do you have any input? So why don't I make a, it sounds like we're leaning towards, with all due respect, Grace, I think we're leaning towards.
No, I know, I understand.
Uh, the majority is probably going to go with the December 15th resolution. Is that correct? Or do you prefer to vote on doing away with it totally? I think the consensus.
If we strike down the December 15th one, won't we revert to policy? Because that would be no action.
If you do neither one, then it reverses back to policy.
Right.
That's never going to change.
Okay, so I can, I can safely just make a motion. Okay. Are we good, then? Any more conversation?
I think we're good.
Okay. Are, we can debate after I make the motion also, just so everybody understands that. Theoretically, that's when we should be debating. If I can get a motion, please, to approve the COVID-19 resolution. If I can get a motion, please, to approve the COVID-19 resolution dated December 15th, 2022, as presented.
Still moved. Yeah, I'm sorry, Jeff. Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries six, one. All right, thank you. Moving on. Troutline Elementary, Dr. Henderson.
Good evening. I am proud and eager to share the story of learning and growth at Troutline Elementary over the last couple of years, specifically the last year and a half. It has been focused on and interwoven with intentionality and fidelity. Our mission remains focused as a family where we are striving for academic growth and character among our students. Our enrollment is about 396. It changes about every other week, sometimes every week. We are thrilled to have two early childhood classrooms, our satellite centers. And then additionally, in grades first through fifth, we've had 49 new students join us this year. Our demographics look like this. It appears that we have a predominantly white building, but what this does not show is the beauty of the many cultures represented at Troutline. This is a celebration that we are so proud of. We have a team of teachers that has put together a cultural awareness group. They meet, they are sharing different cultures, celebrations of holidays, so on and so on, through announcements and with staff. So I'm very proud to share with you of 22 countries represented and 24 languages. Our demographics look as this. Our EL population is 20%. We have 43% of our families that utilize meal assistance, which is a slight increase. Before COVID, we were hovering around 40%. We've decreased about a percentage or two with students who have IEPs, and I attribute this to the interventionist and the ability to service some of these students at a tier-two level before needing to take them to a tier-three level. And we have 3% of our families, about nine or 10 families in transition. Those are families that are doubled up or have traditionally been called homeless status. Attendance. Overall, again, this changes, but we're hovering in the upper 80s right now. I will tell you, this week, we finally hit back over the 90s and we were very excited.
Yes.
This has been a huge piece of the work with our SEL Action Team this year. We are really trying to motivate students through just talking, Spirit Days, student recognitions, classroom recognitions, every single day. We are running a school-wide PDSA cycle that's been going for two months. Every single day, that little study tracker, Google Doc, teachers input their percentage of attendance. I share out classrooms and celebrate those each morning. And then teachers also post that outside their classroom doors. In addition to that, the school counselor, myself, and our secretary meet every three to four weeks and go by student, by student, by student, and determine who we need to make personal phone calls to, who should we send a letter to, as just kind of an awareness of the number of days missed. We're keeping at that. So, you know, getting to what we're here for at Troutline, it's really the learning. And it's the learning of the students and us as the staff. And I talked about that intentionality and the fidelity of what we've been doing. And I really credit the MTSS Foundation and framework for that. Last year, we really took some deeper looks at the core tier-one instruction and assessment that was happening in our classrooms. And really, that congruence and alignment with that as well. You're going to see some real positive results that came from that. And then the cultural awareness piece has been really just embedded in everything and interwoven into everything that we're doing this year. Our school-wide goals have not changed much over the last many years. We focus on reading, math, and access and opportunity along with sense of belonging and attendance. Talked a little bit about this. You've probably seen this graphic on the right side already this year, but it was powerful for me. It talks about that tier-one and all students, whether you're in tier-two or tier-three, receiving access to those, you're also receiving tier-one. And when we can tighten up our tier-one instruction, then we have, we can be less reactive in meeting students at tier-two and three. There's, there's still, there's still need, of course, but there's less need. And we know that it's, it's, it's the academic, it's the SEL, it's the school-wide universals, which has been, was a huge piece of work that Dr. Wood led last year with our school community action team. You know, we realized that kids came back and they didn't know what it meant to be a student or to be respectful or to show integrity, integrity. We really, like, as a staff, went piece by piece by piece. And we realized we have to identify what that is. We need to get on the same page and then have those same clear expectations for kids. This is where some major celebrations from last year coming out of COVID. So what this data represents is our I-ready comparison data and reading. You can see in each of the grade levels, there was an increase in the tier-one. That means students meeting expectations and a decrease of students in the tier-three from the fall to the end of the year. Take a look at first and second grade, the work that those teachers did, early intervention in moving those kids and making some real, some real gains with them. Our reading data with the NSGRA that's teacher-administered mirrors the I-ready benchmarking data. Lots of great growth, great growth in first grade and second grade. You see a, a smaller increase in kindergarten, and that's because our kindergarteners do not have reading levels on their report card until mid-year. This is just a portrait of the numbers, not the number, but the percentage of students that were meeting expectations. You can see the large majority of our kids were reading on grade level. Here's the math data. Again, it mirrors the, the picture of our reading data. And this I'm so incredibly proud of, our MTSS work last year. We realized, and I give credit to our math interventionist, Dawn Baronic. She realized that number sense, like, the basics of numbers was really kind of a weakness in fifth grade, in fourth grade where she worked. And so she put together this assessment on her own, and then we shared, she shared that with all grade levels, and number sense became a school-wide emphasis last year. You could walk in a PE class and there was an interwoven piece in the instruction with number sense. You could watch kids sit in the hallway for a bathroom break, and they were practicing number sense. So these increases of students meeting expectations in the spring did not surprise me. I was quite pleased. Again, amazing gains, first grade, second grade, fourth grade. Like they were moving mountains for us. This is also really exciting because this shows us, last year, the standard view, it's kind of the picture of what we're looking at. You see that we increased in reading from the fall to the spring, as I just spoke about, decreased that tier-three, those students far below expectations. As we entered this year and we look at the beginning of the year view and I-ready, it tells us that 77% of our students are on target for meeting expectations. So it says to us that those students who were with us really seem to keep those skills over the summer. In math, again, a 31% increase last year in, with students meeting expectations. And our beginning of the year view this year is 68%. So we're pretty proud to see that. Here's some longitudinal data to show you with regard to I-ready. So this takes back to, from fall to spring, and it goes back from 1920 to last year. And what you'll see is that every year, we increase the percentage of kids that were meeting expectations from beginning to end of year. And we decrease the number of kids that were far below those expectations. What this also shows, though, is with longevity of these benchmarks, our students are beginning to show us that they're performing even better on them, which is fantastic because these mirror the math test. And so hopefully, we will continue to see that effect on math test. Math is much the same. You can kind of see, we've been 13% to 25% way back in 1920. And here we are from nine to 40 last year, like, huge gains. This slide has quite a bit here. So this is the student support beyond classrooms, and this is really important. So you have teachers, you have our level school district reading teachers who primarily service kindergarten through third grade. They also service students who have reading improvement plans. Those are noted as students reading two years are below grade level, two years or more below grade level in grades four and five. You also see on here, our EL teacher, our academic interventionist who works with literacy in grades K1 and 2, and our math interventionist who works in grades four and five. So the ESR interventionist, our academic interventionist, and our SEL interventionist have been able to fill in the holes in those spaces that we have not been able to previously serve students. So it has been quite a blessing. And while the interventionists are a huge piece of the work we're doing, it's taking all of us to get where we are. We have a number, a number of clubs that connect our students, which is just, it's, it's a blessing. Our kids love the clubs that we offer. And I just kind of want to wrap up with some panorama, panorama data from last year in the spring. You know, I talked about Dr. Wood's leadership with our universal expectations and kind of revamping that and implementing that with fidelity and being very intentional. And 82% of our K through T teachers, actually, I take that back. This is not spring, it's this fall, reported favorably that their students were showing emotional regulation at the beginning of the year. In grades three through five, this is student-reported. And, you know, I was very proud to see that they're feeling engaged and they feel that they belong. And that's, that's the core of what we want for our kids. And thinking about staff, we are, we have, you know, a sense of well-being where people really love being at Troutline. It just feels good. It's a good place to be, and we see that reflected in this data. I'm really proud, I talked about the cultural awareness. We started some work last year as a staff, thinking about equity and biases and diversity. This year, we've carried this work over into our early release. And part of that time is being used as a staff-wide book study on Unpack Your Impact. And so when I see those cultural awareness and the professional learning about equity with such large gains, it says to me, we are heightening awareness, we are reflecting on our own, and that's carrying over into our classrooms. And this is the, this is what captures it all. This is our why, these are our students, this is why we come to school and do what we do every day, and we love it and we're thankful. Thank you for your time this evening.
All right, thank you, and congratulations on all of your great gains. We love seeing that. Next up is Woolwind Elementary, Dr. Dave Meschke.
Great, thank you, Dave, for giving me the opportunity to talk tonight about Woolwind. Our mission is to educate everyone every day. And that's because we believe at Woolwind that everyone, whether they're an adult or a child, can learn something new every day. Currently, we have 421 students in our building. And as you see, our trend is going down over the years. However, our enrollment stays within the demographer's projections. He had that media, or the low, medium, and high were pretty much smack dab between the low and medium projections that he had made. Our subgroup numbers are stable when we look at different, the previous years that we've had. Our special ed numbers, though, I expect to reduce pretty significantly next year. And that's because we have 15 students in fifth grade that are going to be moving on to middle school that have IEPs. When I've talked to the Early Childhood Center, we only have three kids with IEPs coming in for next year. So we're going to have a much smaller special ed population. And we don't have a lot of packets in play right now that are going through the system. So that'll be a little bit smaller subgroup than what we've had in, in the past. Our certified staff has grown over the last couple of years due to the ESR interventionists and then also the district-funded interventionists. You'll notice that last year, we had 10 transfers with inside the building. This allowed me to completely renovate a grade level that was ready for some new challenges. The teachers all were able to get into positions that were more desirable for them. And it also allowed us to add experienced teachers into those ESR intervention positions, which was something that has been phenomenal, especially for that SEL and for that math position that we had. Now, I'll talk a little bit about our school improvement plan. And we have three key areas that I'll cover tonight. I'll talk about student preparation, safety, and employee support. We try to keep, or try to help our students achieve at least one year's worth of growth in reading and math. Additionally, we use the MTSS process to differentiate instruction for learners so that we can support and challenge all the students as they make their educational journey. In August, 80% of Woolwind students were considered on grade level for the I-ready fall benchmark for reading. The students in kindergarten through fifth grade took the assessment. The kids who score, or who were within that third tier, the red up there, those kids all receive either LLI, Phonics First, or Special Education support in reading. Students that are in tier-two, they receive small group daily instruction from their teacher. And then they also are able to take part in either in-school tutoring. We have a tutor that comes in during the day, three days a week. And then we also offer after-school tutoring on every grade level using ESR funds. This graph shows the historical trend with our I-ready over the last few years. And it shows that we are trending up even through COVID, which is kind of surprising because we saw a lot of regression over the past couple of years with that. And then when I, I didn't include a slide with our NSGRA data, but 78% of the kids in the building last year had either scored on grade level or made one grade levels, or one year's worth of growth with their NSGRA reading scores last year by June. Our fall benchmark data for math in I-ready is exactly the same as it was for reading. We have 80% of the kids are on level. Same thing with the students in the red. Those kids are, either have Special Education or instead of having those other supports like LLI, we have a math interventionist with our ESR funds. And he works with those students only. We're very focused on that group of kids because they are two grade levels or more below expectation according to I-ready. And then the students that are, would be in that tier-two, they also work every day in a small math group with their teacher, the classroom teacher. And then they also have access to that end-to-day tutoring or after-school tutoring. And then our math scores have also trended upwards over the last several years with I-ready. And my hope is, is that this will strengthen as we keep going on. Because if you remember, in 2020 and then even in 1920, if a student was exposed, they were out for 10 days. If a teacher was exposed, they were out for 10 days. So that lost, led to a lot of lost learning during those times. So math, I-ready, NSGRA, we have lots of data sources that we can consider to make student intervention plans using that MTSS model. We progress monitor kids using running records for reading and in a program called EZCBM for math. The MTSS progress, our process provides behavioral and emotional supports as well for students. Students are selected for MTSS with behavior using panorama surveys, SRSS surveys, attendance rates, and then the number and severity of office referrals. Michelle and I meet at least once a month with every team to discuss every, every student's progress so that we can respond with interventions to make sure that the kids can progress. Our next two slides show the number of groups that the ESR interventionists are working with. We're focused on a very small group of kids this year. Like I said before, those who are two levels behind in math or those who have six or more areas of concern on the SRSS survey. Students working with the ESR interventionists do not receive help through special school district. The math interventionist works with groups of four to five students for 30 minutes a day. So he has 10 groups of fortified students throughout the day. And they work on whatever the kids' greatest weaknesses are. So like, for second grade, it might be adding and subtracting with regrouping. He progresses, monitors them bi-weekly, and then he adjusts his plans with those kids so that he can either make his instruction a little bit more difficult, moving them on, or move back a step if need be. The SEL interventionist, she works with 10 groups of students a day as well, also K to 5. She also teaches full-class SEL lessons. She's working with fifth grade right now on being kind and using kind words. She also supports students that are in crisis on a one-on-one basis. She does our check-in, check-out data, our check-in, check-out program, which is a data you can see on the board right now. And that's a check system to help motivate kids to follow the wildcat way throughout the day. And as you can see- And as you can see, most of the students on here are about ready to graduate. So probably after winter break, we'll have a new group of students coming into that program. The second part of our improvement plan focuses on safety, specifically having a welcoming place where everyone feels like they belong. Our trend is going up with sense of belonging, although we have a little bit of weakness over the last two survey dates. We're focused on using PBIS universals, Zones of Regulation, and we're able now to bring back team-building and cross-grade-level buddies to make the kids feel more comfortable at school. After Thanksgiving, we have a second grader who told his teacher and the SEL interventionist how much he's always hated school. But with the help of everybody, he now likes school, and he's ready to buy some merch, he thinks. We have a lot of clubs that we're offering to kids, and we have a very high rate of participation in those clubs, more so than we've had in the past. Teacher sense of belonging is going up, which is great, because it's allowing us to be successful with our T-Ton Science School implementation, which takes us into employee support, employee support, which is our place-based education. So last year, 100% of the teachers voted to join the TSS program, working with, including the students' place, our place, and the world around us. And so this year, we're learning about the six principles of education, of place-based education, and we're going to really drill into learner-centered and interdisciplinary. These are the first parts of personalized education. And then my final couple of slides are just some examples. Our fifth grade has done some stuff with Stray Rescue to learn about how nonprofits benefit communities. We did some things with how soccer is important to a lot of cultures. Our third graders went to learn about land features over at Cliff Cave. Another group of kids went to Cliff Cave to study plants, and they're going to go visit multiple times this year to see how those adaptations of those plants help the plants survive. And then our kindergartners went and explored how leaf drops happen throughout the fall, and what kind of leaves drop, and what the impact is, and they graphed what the differences were. Thank you, guys, for listening, and feel free to drop by any time. Thanks for being here.
Thank you very much.
I have a comment. I just want to congratulate you on, I stopped by there, and I'll tell you what, this school has really got it going on. And I congratulate you for that, Dr. Meshky. I think what you're doing there is fabulous.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We have a great staff, and they're doing a lot of good things.
Yes, you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One other quick comment. I want to say I love to see that you guys are utilizing Cliff Cave Park, given the fact that it's right behind your building. Such a wonderful opportunity.
We're over there all the time.
That's all.
The kids love it. It's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, Special Education Compliance Report. Dr. Smith, not the one I thought it would be, but it's still Dr. Smith.
No, and you would think it's going to require just quick board action that Special Education Compliance Report is being pulled until January. Mr. Smith is out, and we have some data questions from Desi regarding the compliance report.
Thank you. Thank you. So up really is curriculum revisions. Dr. Bryant, say.
There you go. Annually, the curriculum directors and the curriculum team have a chance to be able to engage in curriculum conversation and implementation with regards to standards. This is a time annually where we take a look at the potential of adding classes that may be needed, and occasionally even archiving a class that may be combined, and essentially sunsetted or retired. That does happen occasionally, and we do have an example of this. Overall, this particular year, we have a total of 37 classes that were, are being brought to the board with regards to the documentation that you have in front of you. Of those classes, we have five at the elementary level, one new, and four that have updated standards. This is around English language development. All of these particular ones at the elementary level. We do use the Desi Missouri Learning Standards, and those are influenced by the WIDA standards, specifically at the national level, or anything that's English language development-related. At the middle school level, we didn't have any new classes, but we did have standards updates. Most of that was around English language development, or health, or updates with regards to standards, specifically in the area of math. And at the high school level, we did have three new classes. Those three were all in the science area. One is kind of a combined course, but it's a new standalone course. In Earth Science, a new course that was pulled from other curriculums, it's called Applied Science. And the last one was a new course called AP Physics II. That would be for kids who would complete AP Physics I. If they completed that, that would give them the physics sequence that, it would be for a small percentage of our kids. We recognize that, but that would be available at both high schools pending board approval. I know in the original notes, it just said OHS. We may have kids initially at OHS, but that would be good for, if we have any Melville High kids that would take AP Physics I, they could ultimately, if the, you know, if their interest was there, you could also potentially offer AP Physics II at any particular high school. But most of it is just simply a referencing standards, and the curriculum team, the curriculum directors, go through that process with, you know, our teams of teachers that we pull in to be able to review what's currently in practice. We have a curriculum sequence that we follow over the course of seven years. That way, it allows us to financially be able to keep things fairly stable. So we don't, in some years, science is very heavily, it's a bigger investment financially, because of labs and resources. And especially with inflation, we tend to see, you know, rates being between 10 and 25% higher than what we were originally expecting. And in other areas, you may not see quite as significant of a financial investment. So we do balance these, so we can keep our overall percentage and our overall dollar amounts pretty stable. That helps from a finance standpoint as well. And so Marshall and I work pretty closely when it comes to doing that. So that's a side note. This is more just about standards, and specifically either archive classes or new classes that we will adopt every year. We tend to go through this process. And so, and I try to bring all of them to roughly around this time. It is occasionally a possibility that one could happen in January, February. It has happened before, but we're not, we don't usually anticipate that.
Jean?
Jean.
I have a question. Is there some list of curriculum classes that we've eliminated over the course of the last few years?
Yes, that, in terms of the list, it does exist in CISS. We can run, I can, we can pull a list specifically in CISS. Andrew Coonard, our Director of Data and Assessment, I recently saw that list. We use a specialized code for that. We put a letter in front of it to know that it's really no longer available once it has been archived.
I'd be interested in seeing what we've let go of over the last few years.
That's easy enough for me to be able to do.
Oh, could you do that, send that to me?
I absolutely can.
And I'll share with the rest of you.
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? All right. If I could please get a motion to adopt the courses as, the curriculum revision courses as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. So I think that was Tori and Jeff.
Yep.
Got it?
Tori and Jeff.
Okay, thank you. All right, next is action items by consent. Does anybody need to pull anything?
We need to, we need to pull minutes from 12:08. Because I don't think Grace was there, right? Don't we have to pull that?
I can still vote, I read.
You just have to stand up.
I did check that out. I did check that out, so I am still allowed to vote.
So we can vote, no problem.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, all righty.
I know.
If I can get a motion to approve action items by consent, A through F.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Sorry. Next is communications, and we don't have any open period for patron comments. Students, do you guys have anything to add?
So Oakville, the teacher versus student basketball game was being placed today.
Could you sit closer to your microphone, please? Thank you.
And FCCLA is hosting their annual Presents for Paws event from December 12 to 16. They have a pet supplies collection drive that benefits four local animal shelters, a holiday-themed spirit week, and pet pictures with Santa on December 18. The marching band will be traveling to Atlanta over the break to perform at the Beach Bowl on New Year's Eve. And lastly, multiple clubs are adopting families and doing potlucks to celebrate the holidays.
All right, thank you, Jenna.
Thank you.
So everyone's ready for a break, but that's not stopping us from just trying to have some fun. So our World Cup Bracket Challenge is is coming to an end soon with the finals being on the 18th. Today, our robotics class and our robotics club went over to Oakville to battle it out, you know, battle bot-style showdown. I don't really want to say who won.
Patrick was there, I think, he knows.
It was, it was a great competition between both high schools. Both high schools at least won a few rounds. That's a fair statement.
Good.
Our tech classrooms have been designing doors for our yearly door decoration contest, and two Footloose auditions have begun for our spring play.
Oh. We made you know dates on that as we approach it. All right, well, thank you, Eric. If I could please get authorization of closed session.
Motion to adjourn closed meeting. Overpass of reading of minutes of previous meetings and corrections and approval of same and other items under the Missouri Revised Statute 610.021, subsections 1 through 21, and 610.022, subsections 1 through 6. Hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting particular employees, section 610.021.3. Legal action, causes of action, or litigation,